Ms. Too, would you call the roll, please?
Hal Glanville.
Here.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Debra Johnston.
Here.
Phil Luken.
Here.
Travis Orbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Gary Tellkamp.
Here.
Linda Barbell.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remember, council, if you have any conflict of interest, please let everyone else know before you vote. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda. We're going to add a personnel item C, and that will be for Bob Jr. Nelson, full-time city administrator, last day effective September 19th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda which includes under personnel item C, Bob Nelson Jr., full-time city administrator, last day, effective 9/19/24.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the September 3rd council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 3rd council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our claims. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
Make a motion to approve the bills in between for $215,218.91.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
Make a motion to approve the current claims of $152,960.83.
Second.
Gary.
Gary. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to communications from the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the council tonight?
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Smith. I live at 317 South River Street, Hot Springs, South Dakota. My question is, my concern is, I was here during the previous city council meeting and asked a question about the removal of 18 trees on the Garden Street bank between the Brookside Park and the Dip Bridge. I was assured that someone was going to look into it and get me an answer, and that has not happened, so I just wanted to address that and see what the issue was. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for bringing the question up again. I'd mentioned to you that I'd reach out to the city administrator and see what he could tell us. I asked him to return your call. Evidently, I gave him a bad phone number. He had mentioned he'd tried getting in touch with you a couple times. I gave him the correct number, the one that Misty had gotten from you. He tried again today. I did ask him, anticipating that you might be here, and he did confirm that what you and I had talked about, the fact that the trees were removed as a requirement for the city to adhere to the maintenance of the flood channel regarding our contract with the Corps, our agreement with the Corps, and that's why the trees were removed. Is any foliage, any trees within the riprap on the bank of the flood channel? The Corps always asks us to remove those. We all, the city also contracted with another tree firm to remove similar trees up around Evans Plunge, so the area you're talking about isn't the only area that trees were removed from, but it is to meet our obligations that we signed as a city with the Corps of Engineers.
So, can you explain what a riprap is?
The riprap is the large rocks that form the bank of the channel. As it gets further down around Brookside, if those trees, there isn't any riprap down there, but if those trees are growing along the bank, then we take the same approach.
So, I'm a little confused as to the answer, because there were 12 trees that were left remaining. Many of the trees were beside, some of them are up on top, some of them a little bit lower. There were only three trees that were removed that were way down the bank, so I don't understand why some trees are left and some trees are taken out. It just seems really random, and if that's the case, why are there trees in Brookside Park that are all below that riprap area? So, you know, it doesn't seem consistent.
Okay.
Okay.
So, as I understood your question, you were asking why trees were removed. I didn't understand that there were some that were left and some that were, when you said removed, I thought they were all removed. Can you stop by City Hall tomorrow?
I sure can.
All right.
Okay.
Our city--
I have pictures on my phone of the ones that were removed.
Our city administrator typically is there around 8:00.
Okay.
If he's not, then he'll let the folks know that you stopped in and wanted to talk to him, and we'll make sure the two of you get in touch, so that we don't end up doing this again, in that I want to make sure you get all your questions answered. So, if something he would say would prompt another question from you, I wouldn't know to ask that question, so I think it's best that you actually speak with our city administrator about it. So, the trees that were removed were to be consistent with our obligations to the Corps, why some were left. I don't have that specific answer for you, Rebecca.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, before you leave, I'd like to speak up. Mayor referred to the agreement made with the Army Corps of Engineers. That was around 1936, I believe, so this is a longstanding thing. What you have to understand, too, is respectfully, in a lot of ways, we're the ones as a council are making these decisions. Mayor is just speaking up for us, and he goes through an awful lot, so just want to let you know that, too. But the reason why, and I'm speaking for me, not the whole council, is a lot of decisions that are made is because of that agreement with the Corps of Engineers. There is a manual, a book, that specifically shows and tells what needs to be done as far as maintenance on the flood channel, so just letting you know, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Rebecca got you started. All right. Thank you. Council updates. We have an update from the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Josh. Correct me where I get it wrong, Kropinski?
Very good, Mayor. That was perfect. Counsel, good evening. Thanks for having us. Misty, good to see you. Thanks for having me. Seems like a lot of things have transpired since I was last here. I think I was here to weaken my current position. Now, I've been here three months, so we've got all sorts of answers for you. Just to run through a couple of things related to the chamber. First of all, as far as staffing goes, we've been fully staffed again as of the 5th of August. We were able to hire our new social media coordinator and executive assistant, Sarah Dalton Teich, and we hired an administrative assistant, Virginia Cancella, who's currently working part-time for us at the desk at the Mueller Center. Both have been outstanding. They're great additions to the staff, and our office has been running very smoothly with their additions. I think if you've, if you're on Facebook or social media, I think you've seen an updated presence by the chamber, and that is largely due to Sarah's efforts, and we're very thankful for that. We were able to get the Depot Visitor Center reopened on August 12th. As of that date, Joyce Farrell, Perry Holmes, and Frank Mason no longer worked at the Mueller Center for us. They went back and have been staffing the depot for us. They were instrumental in getting it all cleaned up. As you can imagine with the road construction there, it was awfully dirty inside. They did a great job getting it ready, trimmed up some stuff on the outside. It looks great. Since we opened it, we've been averaging 20 to 30 visitors per day, and I talked to Frank this morning. We had 47 in there on last Saturday. Saturday hours are new. Typically, they just staffed it Monday through Friday, but I asked them to keep it open on Saturdays, just to see what kind of presence we'd get there, and it's been worth our time. We're hoping to keep the depot open a little bit longer this year, which should be right through the end of September, September 28th, which will get us through Roundup Weekend, which is almost a full, they closed it before, previously, right after Labor Day, so we've added some time to that. Back on the 4th of July, we had a successful duck race and community picnic. We sold all 1,200 tickets for the duck race, first time in four or five years, I think. That was exciting, and we served over 500 people at the picnic. We didn't plan on 500 people, so we made multiple trips to Lynn's and wherever else we could find hot dogs that day. Next year, because of a all-school reunion, we're planning on serving somewhere between 600 and 700 at that picnic, so it should be, weather permitting, should be a great day. Need to thank all of our volunteers for that event that made that happen. With all of our events without volunteers, they just don't get done. With a staff of three at the chamber, we need lots of help, and people have been stepping up. Onto Balloon Fest, which took place August 23rd to the 25th. I think it was a fantastic event. Want to publicly thank Petra Wilson for her leadership stepping in. Cindy Donnell also was helping. She was going to be our balloonmeister this year, and her mother took ill, and she had to leave, so we haven't seen Cindy in quite some time, leading up to the festival, so Petra, it all fell on Petra from the pilot's standpoint. Did an amazing job. We had 23 balloons. One balloonist, one pilot, had a medical issue on his drive up, so he turned around, so we finished with 22. We got 15 balloons up at the media flight on Friday, did a live interview with KOTATV from, well, on the ground and from the air, which was really cool. I think many of you probably made it to the Glow Saturday night in town, which I think was spectacular. We had contracted or traded a sponsorship with a new chamber member in town called Big Water UAV Solutions, and he was able to get some drone footage for us of the Glow that night, and it's phenomenal, and we're going to use that in our marketing for next year's event, which will be our 10th anniversary. We're already planning, trying to do something bigger, better, maybe a third day instead of just two, but we're excited about how it went this year. Had a lot of volunteers. We're going to need some more. Parking out at the airport is always a challenge, but all in all, I think everything was really positive. The feedback I got downtown that night at the Glow was amazing. Everyone thought town looked alive, lots of visitors, two cows ran out of ice cream, had to close early, so I think it was a good crowd. Our storefront pageant, which will close for judging on November 1st, now has 20 participants, so we're excited about that. We'll continue with our Merchant's Trick or Treat and our Cookie Cruise as we head through the remainder of this year. And then, finally, we're looking at adding some more events into 2025. Brett's going to find out about these big plans on Wednesday, but he'll get a sneak peek tonight. We're going to hopefully have a festival Memorial Day weekend that can kind of tie in with our veterans in town, that can kind of tie in at the end of construction and kind of serve as a, I don't want to say a grand reopening, but hey, look, the orange coins are gone. Come have a lot of fun in Hot Springs, so we're excited about that. And we've got some other plans, too, and as those details become available, I'll be sure to mention them to you. I know I'm excited for 2025. I hope you are, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any right now.
Counsel.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you.
Josh, sir. You had mentioned having the depot open on Saturday.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that. My wife and I were traveling in Wyoming, in a very rural part of Wyoming for the most part, which was great, because there was no cell phone coverage, I mean, nothing, so that was very pleasurable, but we stopped in a community of about 10,000 that had huge activities going on that weekend, and once we did, we got done with the main activities, we all knew what else there was to do in this city of 10,000, so we found the Chamber of Commerce closed on a Saturday.
Yeah.
So, thank you for that.
No, you're welcome. I will tell you, just for your numbers, we would average one or two visitors a day at the Mueller Center during the summer, tops, and when we open the depot, we get, you know, during the summer especially, up to 50 a day on average. It's quite a difference. I mean, we need to have that depot open and talking to people during the summer, for sure, so we're glad to do it. It's a beautiful building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, onto personnel. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through C?
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through C.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our only ordinance of the evening. Can I get a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1260?
Make a motion to approve second reading of ordinance 1260, 2025 appropriation ordinance.
Second. Discussion? Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Linda Barbell.
Yes.
Debra Johnston.
Yes.
Gary Tellkamp.
Yes.
Phil Luken.
Yes.
Hal Glanville.
Yes.
Travis Orbach.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Our only resolution of the evening. Can I get a motion to approve resolution 2024-17?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2024-17, a resolution to surplus city property auction number two.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item A. Can I get a motion to approve an amendment to memorandum of agreement 2022-10?
I make a motion to approve-- Sorry. Are you still talking, Mayor? I was ready to jump out there.
Go for it, then.
I make a motion to approve amendment, amendment to memorandum of agreement 2022-10 with Keep Hot Springs Beautiful to add to language inadvertently, inadvertently removed from the final signed agreement regarding irrigation for the Welcome median at the intersection of Sixth and Highway 18385.
Second.
Discussion? So, council, this is in front of you. In the bills, you approved the city reimbursing Keep Hot Springs Beautiful for the irrigation work, and this amended agreement talks about dates. The significant change that prompted the action last time, as far as the city paying for the irrigation, comes from page, or was added on page three of the agreement, item number six. City will provide, install, and maintain irrigation system. So, that, if you remember in our conversations, that wasn't in the original agreement that was approved by council, so we got it added in here. The rest of them are updating dates, but that's, and then Keep Hot Springs Beautiful asked that we add some of the new bumpouts that they acquired with the road reconstruction. Those are the changes at the heart of the agreement. Did I miss anything significant, Misty?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business item B, an automatic budget supplement of $3,288.22 to the additional sales tax fund?
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $3,288.22 to the additional sales tax fund, services and fees 212-21200-42200, for construction administration of the 10-unit tea hangar, reimbursement revenue received from AIP grant funding, number
Second.
Linda. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item C. Can I get a motion to approve contract 2024-12, use agreement for Fall River Swim Team?
I make a motion to approve the contract 2024-12, the use agreement for Fall River Swim Team to use the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs, September 2024 through March of 2025.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Misty? Did you notice Austin? Thank you. Onto new business item D. Can I get a motion to approve complete concrete to asphalt the parking lot area near Evans Plunge?
Make a motion to approve complete concrete to asphalt the parking lot area near Evans Plunge at a total cost of $8,754 to be paid for by future supplemental appropriation from the additional sales tax fund, capital replacement reserves to be paid from improvements other than building, 212-21200-43300.
Second. Discussion?
Is this the parking lot that's on the north side of the plunge? That's--
No.
Actually, on the road.
Yeah. Tracy, in his update last council meeting, had let you folks know that in the design of that intersection, the entrance into the Evans Plunge parking lot that was adjacent to the gas station, the state removed it because that entrance into an intersection was too close, so they didn't want it there. They didn't design it there anymore. So, the state stepped up and said that they would go ahead and widen the entrance on the south end of the Evans Plunge, and they also paid to have the asphalt ground up. That area there needed to be resloped a little bit. It was holding water, and then the city was going to pick up the tab for the asphalt, so that's this portion of it.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item E. Can I get a motion to set a public hearing on October 7th, 2024, at 7:10 p.m.?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on October 7th, 2024, at 7:10 p.m. on the transfer applications from Southern Hills Mercantile LLC to Whiskey River LLC for on-off sales, retail malt beverage, and South Dakota Farm Wine License, and on-off sale retail wine license to be used at 445 North River Street.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our final new business item, can I get, F, can I get a motion to approve a special sale alcoholic beverage license application for Moccasin Springs LLC?
I make a motion to approve the special sale alcoholic beverage license application from Moccasin Springs LLC, doing business has the Dragonfly for the Oktoberfest event to be held at the Centennial Park, 275 Garden Street on October 6, 2024.
Second. Discussion? Haven't seen anyone here from Moccasin Springs.
This had been previously approved by council under her Southern Hills Mercantile liquor license, which is being transferred, so we have approved this--
All right.
Event.
Previously, this is the same license holder with a different business, so we put it back on there.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Goodness, we're moving right along. Onto our committee reports. First one, administrative and finance. J.R.?
Admin and finance met at 1:00 p.m. on September 9th here at the Mueller Center. In attendance were Misty Somers Walton, Deb Johnston, Hal Glanville, and J.R. Huddleston, Chair. Whole business, additional costs related to water, wastewater replacement, suspended sidewalk, and other road-related project costs, ongoing review and discussions. $156,000 remaining on the water wastewater infrastructure replacement contract, majority is retained each. Grant funding has been fully utilized, $0 remaining. Sidewalk, $1.2 million remaining on construction contract. $40,000 remains on ISG design and construction engineering. Wayfinding contract is fully paid out. Council needs to see the final for acceptance. Number two, update city job descriptions, update desired minimum qualifications, and add other desired qualifications. Remove SD, DLIC requirements. Update Southern Hills Golf Course work hours, days, descriptions. Update rec director number of hours. Look at the title of the development coordinator, golf operations manager, and description updates will be finalized by January 2025. Number three, Fall River County dispatch agreement 2025 and beyond pending. More information is required. Item number four, review impact of DOL OT rule change on salaried Southern Hills Golf Course employees, removal of accumulation of flex time since OT is required to be paid 7124 and 1125 pending. Review leave used accrued at the 2024 year-end. New business item one, mayor item, no report. Number two, city admin administrator items, no report. Number three, committee members items, city auction of surplus property will be online through routine auction service starting Friday, the 27th of September, and end October 1st, 2024. DSU cybersecurity review will start September 23rd. Number four, review monthly finance officer's report. Misty reported year-to-date city spending, I'm sorry, city expenses currently exceeding revenue by 1.9 mil. This is up $1 million in one month. To council, pay attention to spending and our approvals. Number five, review discuss adding annual increase to steps for full-time employees effective 1125. Review positions where top of step is low, i.e. the admin assistant, library clerk, EPMS facility director, airport manager, and part-time Class 1 maintenance operator at minimum wage. COLA and TOS will increase for all full-time employees in the amount equal to part-time state increase for minimum wage increases beginning in 2025. Still yet to be determined. Number six, review finance recommended changes to procurement policy in light of new laws 2023 and 2024. Council to receive revised document in the info side of the packet for review on 915, I'm sorry, excuse me, 916 meeting. Small changes will be highlighted, and everything else remains the same. Council will vote on it on October 7th council meeting. Number seven, discuss safety policy review for possible changes postponed to a later date. Item eight, begin citywide review of 2025, discuss focus areas and overall goals for review. All department heads are being asked, and committee members, and committee chairs are being asked to review fees for their respective areas. Number nine, bridge and potential sidewalk sign rules-- Number nine, bridge and potential sidewalk sign rules, advertising on signs posted on public property. Event banner signs with sponsors advertised on signs located on bridges, sidewalks, et cetera appears to be a violation of the current signs, billboards, and other advertising structures, ordinances. Who's a city official responsible for authorizing and enforcing this sign ordinance? Requesting public works and parks and recreations to review and provide input. We adjourned at 1:55 p.m., next meeting is October 15th at 1:00 p.m., Mueller Civic Center, and subject to your questions.
My brain spaced, you said each committee is subject to their fees, what, run that by me again?
For the fees?
I didn't understand.
Can I cut that phrase there?
Go ahead.
We discussed during budget, reviewing all the fees before 2025. So that's what we're starting, looking at all the fees, golf course changes their fees, other places where fees may need to be addressed or changed, and we're starting that process and we're requesting department heads or the active committees to discuss the fees related to their operations.
Okay. Thanks JR, thanks Misty.
Thank you, Misty.
Anyone else? Thank you, JR. Airport advisory, Gary?
The airport advisory committee met on Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport. Called order and roll call, members present, Shane Miller, Mark Buxbaum, and Petra Wilson. Employees, airport manager Ivan Venner, city administrator Bob Nelson, Jr., public works engineer Tracy Bastian, KLJ airport engineer Charlie Baker, elected officials, myself and alderman Bill Lookins. The agenda was adopted as published, communication from the public. Petra Wilson, who is also a committee member, said the overall balloon festival was a success in spite of high winds aloft, which prevented the safe launching of balloons. Petra said they were able to do a media launch on Friday and got some good drone publicity footage. Petra said that next year will mark the 10th anniversary of the balloon festival and they are discussing expanding the event to three mornings of flying along with potential of additional activities immediately following the launch at the airport. Airport manager update, Ivan reported that there is one hangar opening at the present time, otherwise all of the hangars are full. Fuel sales are down because airport had been closed as runway and taxiway sealing was being done. The taxiway and runway has been crack sealed, seal coated and marked. The runway was reopened on September 5th, 2024. There were some materials left over and the entryway to the airport was seal coated at no charge. We have a problem with sandbars and goat heads in the cell that is disturbed during the tee hangar construction that needs to be dealt with. Ivan reported that Charlie Baker is following up a chase from High Plains rectors on some door issues on the new tee hangar. Seating around the new tee hangar will take place in October. There are no airport observations with opportunities for improvement. Old business, Ivan is going to get back to the feedlot on their view and discussion of grazing lease. New business, there are 22 acres that have the potential for development on airport property, which cannot be taken from Zone B and transferred to the city. Any revenue that is generated from this property needs to be earmarked for the airport. Next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 3rd at 8:30 a.m., meeting adjourned at 10:15 a.m. And after the meeting adjourned, the Badlands flying started Thursday, and so I've got an addendum here. And so it was announced, a couple of different things, it was announced on September 6th, the day following our meeting at the Hot Springs Airport, has been granted $545,400 for AWAS III system. The numbers for the Badlands fly-in, which took place on September 5th, 6th, and 7th, 75 airplanes were in attendance from eight different states. 3,095 gallons of aviation fuel sold at $5.99 a gallon, and purchased for $4.67 a gallon for a net profit to the city of $4,085.40. Approximately 55 rooms were rented for three nights, a total of 165 rooms. Good job, guys. And that's it, man?
Nice.
Any questions for Gary? Gary, you were mentioning that there's only one open hangar, is that between the big city hangar and the 10 units?
That was one of the tee hangars, I believe, that may, that may have been filled from the time that I wrote this to.
Okay.
Now, I'm not sure on that.
So then, am I correct that there were three planes that moved out of the city hangar into the tee hangars?
I believe that's correct.
So do you know of the three that moved, how many might have, how many new planes might have moved into the city hangar?
I don't, I don't believe any new airplanes have moved into the large city hangar.
Okay.
I think we had one, like 40-foot wingspan aircraft, or Ivan was talking to him about it, I don't know if that's been finalized.
Yeah, I think that was, correct, you're looking at purchasing that airplane, I don't know if that's come about, it's a, so it's a possibility.
All right. Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The board members for the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District last met on Thursday, September 12th, 7 o'clock here at the Mueller Center. The only discussions were about finances and internal improvements for the Waste Management District, nothing of significance or anything to do with the public dealings of the city. The next meeting will be on Thursday, November 14th, 2024, at 7 o'clock here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic preservation, Deborah?
Historic preservation met on September 4th, 5:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center. Present was Pat Like, Carl Hall, Joe Nicosche, Joanne Nicosche, Scott Soggy, myself, and public member was Andrea Powers. There was no quorum, but we did have some discussion and updates, but nothing was voted on. Under the communication from Andrea, from the public from Andrea, she was asking about what was needed by the theater, they're trying to get a grant to restore the marquee, and so that information was passed on. And then, under our new business, we did get a report from our city administrator for updates of what he has been working on towards historic preservation. The first thing is the historic staircases, plans are nearing 80% for the reconstruction and rehabilitation of the three staircases. 2025 will be the next transportation alternatives grant round for funding of the project. Number two, historic interpretation panel, still researching the history of the Seven Sisters and would welcome any information people may have on the naming of the peaks or the history of the range. Number three, the flood channel railings, awaiting estimates from two contractors, All Metal and Norton Welding, to repurpose the old railing on River Street with the addition of aircraft cables to make the railing compliant with the code, and that railing is planned to go up in front of the Springs Inn across from Kidney Springs, because that wall is too low. Number four, deterioration by neglect properties, the two buildings are being addressed through the legal process and the city attorney has been working through the process. Number five, in and around Hot Springs, there are several cast branch interpretive panels, and they are all in need of maintenance and repair. He was working on who, what, and how right now to get them taken care of. Number six, cemetery, the city will be making application to the Deadwood Historic Preservation to repair, reconstruct a retaining wall in the cemetery. Grants will be due in December with work to begin at the beginning of 2025. City hall, the rear of the building is in need of tuck pointing and installation of wood windows and doors, this work has to be done. And Evans Plunge, the exterior of the building is in need of paint. If we were to look at a different color, is there a palette Historic Preservation would like us to work off of? And then, just an update from Joe Nicosche on the Evans Apartments windows, she wrote up a grant to the HUD Green New Deal Weather Compliance, and she got that sent in in June for $6.8 million, with $2 million of that being contingency. The decision on that should be showing up here at the end of September. And that is pretty much the extent of what went on. Our next meeting will be October 2nd, 5:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah?
Deborah, can you go back to the stairs again?
Okay. We, remember, we approved, in order to qualify to start applying for grants, we approved the engineering study to be done to the tune of $90,000, $91,000. And so that's what, the 80% of that whole thing, I believe, is what he is referring to, because that has to be done before we can apply for the.
Transportation.
Transportation, yeah. Alternative grant. And those grants are only given to areas that connect with trail systems, and so ours qualify because they connect to the Freedom Trail.
So it's a transportation grant that we have to wait on next?
We have, yeah.
And that, we can apply for that next year?
We can apply for it in, let's see, 2025, doesn't say what month.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Thank you, Deborah. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
Okay, I have minutes from the August and September meetings. We met August 8th at the plunge at noon. Present were myself as committee chair, staff present were Tom Nas, Akoya Zemiga, Gabby Martin, and Jayla Evans. Updates on operations, the HVAC for the lobby and office areas is not repairable, so a replacement has been ordered. A bearing failure in an exhaust fan has occurred, replacement is being looked into. We used more chemical this year than we used last year. Swim lessons have been completed for this year, it was a very successful program. The health club, we reviewed the usage of the health club equipment, and due to the damage of the machines, it was suggested to raise the age of unsupervised users from 14 to 16. We will be researching the reason for lowering the age in the first place. A review of monthly incidents, we had two incidents, one of which made the front page of the weekly Herald Star. It was a very nice write-up about the training also required to make this a safe, successful operation. We have two new lifeguards, so with school starting soon, we are going into the fall season looking good. We are looking to see if there is any interest in an internship through, program through the school. Other communications included, we will be closing the outdoor pool on August 18th, 2024. The next meeting is scheduled for September 12th at noon at the plunge, and we adjourned that meeting at 12:40 p.m. We met on September 12th, present were employees Kari Molak, Tom Nas, Gabby Martin. Council members were myself, Gary Tellcamp, Larry Pratt. We welcomed the new facility director, Kari Molak. Operations updates from Kari, Akoya resigned, so we will be looking at applications for replacement for that position, as well as other vacancies, as we are down to 10 lifeguards and are also short at the front desk. Equipment and building, per Tom, the HVAC for the office and the break room areas is up and running. The plumbing issue in the men's room area will need to be addressed, it appears to be a major clog or a collapse of the pipe. Tom did ask Larry to get with Tracy Bastian on his plans for the entryway. City rec items, per Gabby, she will check on the certifications for winter swim lessons for the little kids. Health club, for discussion, we need to address the misuse of equipment by the 14, 15-year-olds allowed to use this area unsupervised. It seems these students are not aware of their personal limits to avoid injuries to self and/or equipment. Some ideas for providing supervision were tossed around, we'll be revisiting this issue in the future. Monthly incidents, per Kari, none were reported in the pool area. No other communications were brought up. We adjourned at 12:32 p.m., and our next meeting will be October 10th, noon at the plunge, and the public is invited.
Any questions for Linda? Linda, you had mentioned the entrance and that Larry is going to get together with Tracy?
I had brought up to Tom about what Tracy and I talked about as far as the picture, what the front would look like, and he had done some work on his computer CAD CAM, so that's what I had brought to that, and he wanted some numbers and things like that, right, Linda? Yeah, because in the past Tracy had submitted some, had presented some work to us at the EPEC meeting.
Yeah. I asked because Tracy and I had had a number of conversations about what he had designed and presented, and everybody seemed to like to be on board with. In his estimates of the work, it was $400,000 and up.
Oh my.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would encourage the plunge folks to maybe downsize the expectations a little bit.
Okay.
That's why I brought up the front door and then just changing a little bit right there instead of going all the way out, but yeah.
Yeah, because there was some different plans that Tracy presented to us, and some of them were quite stretched out to, almost to the end of the building and stuff, and so I think we just need to revisit what Tracy had presented to us, because he did give us some alternatives there, so we just need to revisit with that.
Yeah, in my conversations with him, what he presented back to the folks is what he understood they were after or what they were hopeful of.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I say it was very expensive.
Yeah.
Have that conversation again and see what you truly need for it.
I think the first part of it was when Tracy and I were talking down in his office, he showed me a picture that went only so far out from the main door, went only far so out, and then somewhere it got built up to going all the way down to the tree, then to the flagpole, to the tree, and then to the end of the building, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I have a question, you mentioned about increased usage of chemicals, I thought we weren't using chemicals in the pool, is this for?
I believe this is for the hot tubs, the hot tubs, okay.
Anyone else?
Linda, I do remember when the discussion was had regarding the change in age, who should I send that to when I have the data from the discussion and why it was done?
Probably to Kari.
Okay. When she can share it with your group.
Yeah, because that was initially brought up to us by Akoya, who is no longer with us, and we're just doing a follow-up on that, and.
It had to do with like the slide dispatchers using it that are typically that age, places at the school using it, but I'll find that.
Yeah, and I think, I think one, the, some of the older swim team members were wanting to use it as well, and, and they don't, they haven't received the proper instruction on how to use the equipment, and like, like it was said, that, that they may have overextended themselves and caused damage to the equipment and/or them. themselves and caused damage to the equipment and/or themselves. And so we're just thinking, you know, how can we allow them to use this unsupervised if they don't have the proper training to use it? But we will visit that again.
Yeah, I remember that discussion, so I'll just find the notes and share them with you.
Okay.
And, all right.
All right. Okay, thanks.
Parks Recreation, Larry, Lynda?
The Parks and Recreation meeting was Wednesday, September 4th here at the Mueller Center at 2:00 p.m. The elected officials were the mayor, Robert Nelson, alderwoman Deborah Johnson, co-chair persons, alderman Larry Pratt, and alderwoman Linda Varvel. City employees were Lori Sherard, Bart Sieg, and Gabby Martin. In the public, Gerald Colligan, Frank Burkholt, Mike O'Connor, Al Jensen, Kalen Mossitt, and Jason Gesh. In the cemetery updates, Lori, of 26 graves, 20 were dug by city employees. We potentially have a new gravedigger hired. Cemetery walk was successful with 50 individuals attending. There is a business out of Chadron waiting through, waiting through the city permits to allow him to come into the areas to re-level and clean the headstones. In parks, Bart continue, continue mowing areas, and we survived this year's balloon fest. Channel cleaning is nearly complete. It looks like it's done already. City crews will be checking on the lights at the tennis, pickleball, basketball courts after hearing a complaint from the public. In Recreation, Gabby, we have wrapped up summer rec and will be checking with Mr. Demming for interest in winter activities, rec activities. We have 15 pairs of roller skates for use, indoor pickleball for adults, and an offer for taekwondo for up to 20 students was heard. Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, Caitlin was busy working on 20 bump outs with more to be released soon. Reported 60 volunteers logged in, 900 hours to date, and will start up again in late September on or about September 19th, digging tree holes and installing gauges before tree arrival. 130 votes were received in the people's choice. There is a membership drive will be taking place in the spring. In new business, Rob Mason, Memorial Bench Plaque at Chautauqua Park, no new information. Al Jensen and Mike O'Connor, this was this last weekend, September 14th, shared information of the car show hosted by the Southern Hills Drag Race Association and Hot Springs Youth Soccer Association. Defense and future plans, they have money for fencing, just waiting to schedule. 2025 Cemetery retaining wall, perpetual funds will be utilized along with the grant, if awarded, to repair a fallen plot retaining wall. Quotes will be attained this winter with work to start ASAP in 2025. On the Kidney Springs Cazebo Columns, the mayor has been in contact with the column supplier to exchange our one-piece columns with two-piece columns. On the Freedom Trail, Extreme Foundation has been hired to perform several repairs on the Freedom Trail. However, there are several areas where complete panels need to be replaced, looking for a contractor. In old business, a tree grant update completed will be removed, will be removed from the agenda. In irrigating, irrigating public access area along Fall River adjacent to Centennial Park, the update and plan, work on this will begin when city staff begins reclamation of the area from the work done along the river. The School Street Park inclusive playground planning update, Jennifer Sheldon, no update, still fundraising, next grant opportunity will be next March. The Seven Sisters Point of Interest Interrogative Site, still researching and laying out of a plan. In Chautauqua Park, stair repairs, waiting on estimate from competitive masonry. Jason Gesh, Butler Park Basketball Court, resurfacing and sport court, wind screens approved. Remaining funds, install the wind screens, some fencing needs repaired, some materials have been ordered. In public comment, Gerald Colligan watering, tree watering before winter, tuck pointing of Centennial Park Foundation and fund raised for said project from competitive masonry is in negotiations. Was informed by the city that the fencing around the baseball field near south end of the field would remain as it, as it didn't hinder the fire emergency bivouac area. Frank Burkholt expressed concern about replacing the ash trees susceptible to Emerald Ash Bore Disease. Cattails in the creek in favor burning, herbicide, or mowing the area. The channel looks better and perhaps an annual program for removal of said invasive weeds. Mayor Nelson's comment, burning left us with many complaints, need to study on long-term effectiveness. I want to go back up to item four, Seven Sisters Point of Interest. There is a plaque that has been approved by the, if you can remember with me here, mayor, that's been approved, the plaque. It's a picture done by Peg Spurlock of the mountain range, and yes, to your point, Deb, they're still looking for the history of what the names are, things like that, so that's still in conversation on that. Did I miss anything on that one?
Nope.
Okay. And the meeting adjourned at 3:08. Next meeting will be October 2nd, 2024 at 2:00 p.m. And I hope I can answer your questions.
Lynda, anything you'd like to add?
Nope.
Actually, our budget tree grant is not completed yet. We still have to purchase replacement trees for the ones that were taken out, and we plan to do that in the spring of next year. So for now, it's done, but we still have some funds remaining that we plan to use to purchase and replace two trees for every one tree that was pulled out by the contractor for that project.
Okay. Thank you, Misty.
Okay.
Irie, being a member of the Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, got an email today. They're planning on planting the trees in the median across from Lynn's Dakota Mart this Thursday and Friday. They're looking for help, if anyone wants to help hold trees upright or move dirt. So we'll have some trees there by the weekend.
Anyone else? Thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
They will be meeting this Wednesday, the 18th, 6:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Public Safety met Thursday, September 5th at 2:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Civic Center. Members present were alderman Bill Lukens, alderman JR Huddleston, alderwoman Deborah Johnston, mayor Bob Nelson, PD chief Ross Norton, Fall River County Emergency Manager, Frank Maynard, Assistant Fall River County Emergency Manager Gary Baker, and Fall River Hospital Compliance Coordinator Renee Staley. Members of the public were none. Adoption of the agenda was adopted to include the PDMG grant opportunity. Communications from the public were none. Update from the police department, Officer Irs will travel September 12th to pick up the vehicle from the Kansas Highway Patrol, and one officer will be off on paternity leave beginning September 9th. Old Business, review status of action item list, NIMS and ICS training for elected officials, 24-01. After discussion, it was determined that online training through the FEMA website is a preferred training delivery method. Council members will be provided with an email with a link to the website and be requested to complete the training by the end of the year. House Number Project, 2403, status, update survey by the scouts is in progress. Item C, fuels reduction grant, 24-04, no update. Item D, status of signage of Freedom Head, I'm sorry, Freedom Road, 24-08. Sign has been ordered and installation added to the street's work list. Speed sign red repair, relocation to 19th and University, 24-09. Follow-up discussion, making progress with the insurance claim, waiting on a response from the DOT regarding relocation of the sign. New Business, 2024 Deer Harvest Discussion, there will be no deer harvest this year. Will continue to work with the state to look at better options and also look at possible authorized hunt areas on private land closer to the real problem areas for next year. Lane designations on North 16th and University, we're going to leave it as is. A request was made to change the lane designations on westbound University Avenue between River Street and 16th Street and North 16th Street and University Avenue. After discussion, it was decided to leave the designations as they are, as these were assessed and changed about two years ago. Number three, parking concerns were communicated by, to the chief regarding the area Jennings and North 19th. The school will place cones to keep the crosswalks clear to address the specific concerns. Number four, PDMG Initiative Grant Opportunity, grant money may be available for hazard mitigation projects. The committee recommends the city apply for grant funds for the installation of the backup power generators at the wastewater treatment facility and Hot Brook Pumping Station. We adjourned at 2:50 p.m. Next meeting is Thursday, October 3rd, 2:00 p.m. Mueller Civic Center Conference Room, subject to your remarks and questions.
Bill, anything you'd like to add?
No additions.
Counsel, any questions for him?
Yeah, JR?
Sir.
We were talking at the school, do you know, is there a patrol that goes around the school district?
Yes.
Every day?
I can't answer every day, but I am told there's patrol up there. But that, they also spoke with the safety of the school, and safety said they would put out those cones to make sure people don't park there and block those, block division of those crosswalks or blocking the crosswalk itself.
No, I didn't mean anything by that. I'm just talking about just a general perimeter drive around, like a couple times a night.
Does one of the SRO do that? No, I don't think he...
I don't know, I'm just asking if it's done.
No, I, as far as I'm concerned, what Ross said is they do make patrols. I don't know how often, how frequent, once a day, twice a day. That I don't know, but I have seen them up there, so I don't know how often it is, but I can find out and let you know.
Okay. And then, did you say there's an officer on paternity leave?
Yes.
How long for that?
I have no idea.
All right, thanks.
I think it's a few weeks. I think compliance come back at the beginning of October, doesn't it?
I don't know.
And Ross said that today in passing.
I, I hadn't heard that.
Thank you. Public Works, Bill, Al?
Public Works met on August 27th at 1:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center. Members present were myself, Deborah Johnson, Gary Tellkamp, Bill Lukens, mayor Bob Nelson, city administrator Bob Nelson Jr. Members of public present were Bob Sprentel via phone. Communications from the public, discussed items regarding a complaint filed pertaining to the wording of signage at Southern Hills Golf Course, which notifies patients regardless of, regarding of the ordinance prohibiting public urination and the associated fine. Along with the concern in the complaint, a well-considered harsh language of the sign was a lack of similar signage in other city parks where similar violations had been noted. After considerable discussion, the committee took an action item to review and assess Brookside, Centennial, Chautauqua, and Butler Parks for deed for similar, similar appropriate signage. The signage plan will be reviewed and acted upon at the September meeting as the original sign of concern at the golf course since the sign is curtailing the ordinance violation. The committee recommends it remain in place. Look at that, I made it go by itself. A question was brought up regarding the movement at the 385 Bridge at the courthouse when heavy vehicles pass over it. This is normal for the design of the bridge, and the person with the question had been notified. A concern was brought up regarding people parking in the no parking portion of Chicago Street in front of the post office. The public is reminded to adhere to the no parking zone and also signal turns when exiting parallel parking spots. In the old business discussion, crushing concrete at the city shop, the city administrator would like to get a quote to crush the pile of broken concrete at the city shop. The state will be rebuilding asphalt that is at the city shop, and the same equipment that milks the asphalt would be used to crush the concrete. If done concurrently, it would likely save the city mobilization costs. The committee agrees with getting a quote. The city administrator proposed time Extreme Foundation's repair and concrete listing to repair the sidewalks on the Freedom Trail, Butler Park, and the University Avenue at the Viaduct. Since the work is covered by the 2024 budget funds and is less than the threshold required for multiple quotes, the committee agrees to work on which includes, A, the Freedom Trail for $7,787.70, Butler Park is $1,417.80, and University at the Viaduct is $7,606.18. Thus be determined that some of the state's responsibility is associated with the University Avenue Bridge. Departmental summaries, the city administrator provided update information discussed at the 8/27/24 road construction meeting. Code enforcement, the committee has continued to respond to letters issued by the code enforcement specialists, and the city administrator is addressing the questions for recipients. There was no update from the wastewater treatment plant, no update from the public works engineers nor the street department. I like trying that by myself. Active and inactive project information has been updated, it can be found on the current public works report on the city website. The meeting adjourned at 2:19 p.m. The next meeting will be Tuesday, October 1st at One at the Mueller Center.
Bill?
The one new update I think we do have regarding the sidewalk repairs is the $7,000 and change that was estimated for University Avenue. Most of that work will be done, I believe, by the state, so that amount will be significantly less since most of what does need to be repaired is in the, the area that's still the state's responsibility, so that'll help us out a little bit.
Anyone else? So as a refresher, when Bill's talking about the area on University Avenue that's still the state's responsibility, when the city entered into the agreement with the state to exchange, the city would take ownership of University Avenue minus the bridges in exchange for $2.8 million towards the cost of the construction of our suspended sidewalk. So the, the area of the sidewalk damage, the state has stepped up and said they'll go ahead and take care of that along with the other damages in the bridge area. And I believe they're also going to look at the handrails and getting those taken care of. That's the reason the state's picking up the cost for those. So thank you to the state of South Dakota for that. Al, Bill, who was the, who was the contractor that's going to do that? Was it the same one that we're using?
Extreme.
Yeah.
Extreme Foundation.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I'm glad.
Thanks, Al.
You're welcome.
You did a good job, sir. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, the committee met on September 9th. Members present were superintendent Jason Happy, clubhouse manager Jill Low, committee member Dave Merrill, Collette Miller, Don Olsted, Kathy Volmer. There were three members from the public present, Bob Sprentel, Bill Lukens, and Jane Lukens. The grounds report, the walking path behind the clubhouse is ready to be poured. The driving range tee box and several of the par threes have gotten a lot of use and are below Jason's standards, so they're working on getting that taken care of. Irrigation was still critical at that time, becoming slightly less of a priority with the cooler nights. Late summer and early fall aeration is coming on the greens, fairways, and tees. The greens are scheduled to be cross-tined to coincide with the date of the cross-country meet scheduled September 24th. There was a hydraulic leak from one of the mowers on a couple of the greens. Hydraulic oil is not very friendly to grass, so there was some damage there, but the greens are coming back. Clubhouse report, Jill has mentioned that she's noticed that there are a lot of folks that are reserving tee times and not showing up, which results in lost revenue for us. That tee time can only be sold once. If somebody reserves it for 10 o'clock, and at 10:05, the person that reserved it didn't show up, you can't get that one back. So she's looking at how that might be able to manage that and assure that we get charged, we get revenue for people that are reserving those spots. She's reported that the Southern Hills Golf Course has hit the expected revenue for the year. year. Well, that's exciting. The clubhouse has been busy with tournaments and they've also been short-staffed. Jill has put in a lot of long days and long weeks. She's gotten a better handle on that, so appreciate that. One of the committee members had mentioned that there's a rough transitionary from one of the cart paths to one of the highways, the roads out there, so the ground staff will be addressing that issue. One of the members also had mentioned that a number of the season's pass holders have stopped playing the tournaments, which has resulted in some lost revenue because they can't use their season's pass to play in a tournament when the course is closed. And again, counsel, if you remember, we got on board with saying that if the course is going to be closed, then season pass holders are going to pay for those grain fees short of the Don Gannon Tournament. And it was explained why that one, we feel that one should be an exception. One of the public members asked about turkey control on the golf course. We've addressed this with public safety. Turkeys are big game animals, so the city needs the state's permission to deal with those. Was it three, four years ago? Two, three, four years ago, we had talked with game fish and they'll trap them or they'll net them, but they won't allow the city to hunt them. So we'll have to have that conversation with them again to see if they can step in and help us out with the turkey population out there. Was also mentioned in public works about urination problems out on the golf course. We've been dealing with that for six to eight months. We had put some signs up out there that had caused some anxiety with an individual out there. So we spent a lot of time talking about that and whether the signs needed to stay, whether the signs were appropriate, why they weren't in other areas other than the golf course. But what was decided from the meeting is that the signs are going to stay. Lot of notes regarding that one, but I'm trying to summarize it. But it comes down to the fact that the signs have proven to be effective. The people that originally brought the concern to us have said that since the signs went up, they've noticed a significant drop in the behavior of adults that should know better to begin with. So the feeling is the signs are working, so the signs are going to stay. The question has been raised, should we have them in other locations at the golf course and should we have them in other locations throughout the city to be consistent? And we'll continue having that conversation. One other item that came up was Jason had asked the committee about a couple of the end-of-the-year projects that had to do with hole number six, the tee box is on hole number six, and hole number five and number six. The committee didn't have any specific recommendation about which one Jason should address first. They left it up to him to decide which one he wanted to do first and if he had enough time after getting the first one done to get the second one done, go ahead. But the committee didn't give him any direction about which one he should do first. Meeting that started at 8:00 ended at 7:30. The next meeting will be October 10th, October 15th, 6:00 PM at the clubhouse.
It's a 11-hour meeting?
I said that to see if anybody was listening.
[laughing].
So, congratulations.
I may want to tell you good news.
A meeting that started at 6:00 ended at 7:30. Any questions? All right. Misty, do you have anything from a finance officer for us?
I was hoping our city administrator would be here so I could tell him what a pleasure was to work with him over the last 10 months and how much we missed. He's not here, so I'm going to say it anyway. It's a pleasure to work with and we almost definitely do miss, but we all understand and appreciate the reasons people need to change. So I wish him the best and hope that we can find another city administrator as capable and experienced as the one that we were blessed to have for the short time that we did. Just want to remind the city auction dates, the bidding opens with Bradine online Friday, September 27th and closes Tuesday, October 1st. And also a reminder that our DSU private boundary fence penetration testing begins next week on Monday, September 23rd. And then mention to council members the procurement policy that JR mentioned in his administration, the finance report is in the info-only side of your packets for review and will be on the next council agenda for approval. We just added minimum language to general guidelines and then there were some state law changes that took effect in July that we needed to update our procurement policy on and those were related to bid limits and then also changes to the surplus disposal appraisal dollar amount. So there are minimal changes in there, but wanted to give you an opportunity since it's a big document to go ahead and take a look at it before it shows up for approval on the council agenda and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Any questions for Misty? My mayor's report is going to be kind of lengthy tonight, so we're short. I wanted to give it at the last meeting, but the meeting itself ran long, we had an executive session, so deferred to this meeting. Like Misty, I want to mention that certainly going to miss our city administrator moving on. He'd indicated he was going to reach out to all of you folks and let you know individually why he had made the decision to resign. I had, Brett had reached out to me last week and asked if I had had any comments. Definitely going to miss Bob. The experience that he brought to is specific to municipalities was unlike any experience we've had from any city administrator since the city of Hot Springs decided to go that direction. And counsel, I think you've seen how well that worked out from us, for us, what he was able to do for us. What I had said was I did not ask for his resignation. It's been suggested that we not accept his resignation. You folks did. He has his reasons for moving on and they're his to share when he, if and when he wants to do that. He will be sorely missed. And the bulk of the work is probably going to fall right back on Misty as it has in the past. To help get us through this, I'll help where I can and we'll hopefully find somebody as qualified as Bob to replace his position. I want to thank AmeriCorps and the city crews for all the work that they did on the river. They spent two weeks, two and a half weeks down there. People have seen the effect of the work that they did. Some folks are happy about it, some not. I respect difference of opinion. I've heard more positives than I've heard negatives about the work, but I wanted to thank our city crews for stepping up and helping the AmeriCorps folks with that. I'd mentioned that my mayor's report's going to be long and it's going to be long because I want to continue what Josh was talking about from the Chamber of Commerce, the balloon festival. The balloon festival this year, being able to add the night glow on a portion of our suspended sidewalk and our reclaimed river. There were a lot of people down there, in my opinion, having a heck of a lot of fun. There were people down in the river itself. The fact that the cattails are gone allowed them to get balloons down there. There were people in the river itself. So that was our vision for what we have been doing down there is to get it, as Deborah had said, to be more of a multi-use area down there and we're getting there. As far as the balloon festival, Josh had said that there was originally 23 balloons entered, 22 of them were able to actually make it. So I want to thank all of the pilots from those 22 balloons. Want to thank the Chamber of Commerce. They did a heck of a lot of work to pull off this event for us, so I want to thank them for all of that work. I want to thank the pilots and the crews, the vehicle parking volunteers at the airport. If you were out there that morning, there were a heck of a lot of vehicles that needed to be parked, so I appreciate everybody that was there for that. The sponsors, the platinum and propane and race sponsor was Mac Gas. Our gold sponsors were Ace Hardware, KOTA, Territory, ABC, Moccasin Springs. Our silver sponsors were Big Bats, Black Hills Energy, Tom Berger Farm Bureau. Brown sponsors were Southern Hills Mercantile and Taproom, Hot Springs Housing, Billgrave State Farm, Fall River Health Services, Golden West. Copper sponsors were the Dragonfly at Moccasin Springs, Sunny Superfoods, Black Hills Federal Credit Union, Massadentl, CBH Corporation. Our kids' own sponsors, if you were down there, they had all kinds of events for the kids. Sunrise Ridge Campground and Storage. Fall River County Herald Star, Fall River Thrift Store, Lindsay Lupper, AAMS, Edward Jones Financial Advisor, Hills Inn, Larry and Linda Lowry, The Dance Studio, Smokehouse Sports Bar and Grill, Fall River Fibers, Centennial Park Vendors, KZ's Barbecue, Tropical Snow, Kathy's Creations, Knigley's Sauces, Heavenly Treasures, Wayfaring Cat, Dragonfire Jewelry, Dazzling Colors, Lisa and Rachel's Creations, Clifford's Doggone Cart, Rotary Club, Southern Hills Recreation, Kalani's Garden, Food Fest, Fracked Out Woodcraft, Adonny Handmade Gifts, Debbie's Travel Tupperware, Traveling Tupperware, Seas and Screen Printing, Arrow Mountain Design, John's Crosses, Bohunk Charlie, Alien Lamb Works, Fall River Health Services, and US Forest Services. And always want to thank the local businesses. They got together and put together different things to attract all of those folks to come into their businesses. I'm an optimist. I believe that night there was probably close to 1,000 to 1,500 people down in Centennial Park along the river and on that end of town. This community stepped up and really supported this balloon festival. Josh has talked about next year's the 10th Annual Festival. I think this is an opportunity for the city of Hot Springs in its entirety to get behind this event and I think it can grow beyond, well beyond where it's at right now. Josh had mentioned that Petra stepped up and helped. Early on, when my wife and I started going out to the morning launches, I'd asked Petra if she had any idea how many balloons the airport could handle. She said she's confident that they can get upwards of 100 balloons launching out there. That would be huge for this community. And if you haven't been out and watched those launches in the morning, I encourage you to do that. They're gorgeous. Watching those balloons take off with the sun coming up over the eastern horizon, it's worth your time to go out. So I thought it was important to acknowledge all those folks. That's a huge list of everybody that has bought into this balloon festival and I want to thank everybody for that. So thank you very much. Any questions for me? All right. That brings us to a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I make a motion to adjourn this evening.
I had to do that for you.
All right. So you got the motion on the second, Misty?
In that order, I guess.
Linda and Al, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good evening.